Territory of the Comox First Nations, the traditional keepers of this land. Call the meeting to order, introduction of late items. CAO? Nothing? Okay. Approval of agenda. Is everybody good with the agenda? Position and delegations? None? Correspondence? We have one. Two. Under correspondence?
One.
One? Okay. Counsel's report, reported committees, mayor report, unfinished business, staff report, budget planning session held by Lisa Clark. Go ahead, Ms. Clark. Mrs. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so the CAO and I have put together another budget binder package for you tonight. And we've put together a little agenda as to what we're going to be going through tonight. So that's the first page in your binder. I'll just quickly go through it. I have a quick little staff report first, just outlining the process and the dates for getting the financial plan ready for bylaw stage and the readings. So I'll go through that first. Then we have a summary of the 2023 budgeting process to date. We'll then go into public questions or comments. So at that point, you could read out the correspondence that was received and have some discussion about that. If there's any public here in person that would like to speak, that would be the time to do that. Then we've included version two of the 2023 to 2027 financial plan. It hasn't changed from the version that was presented at the previous committee of the whole meeting. It's still, we're still on version two. The next section is a summary of proposed reductions to service levels and department budgets. Again, that hasn't changed from the last time. It's just included here for your reference to discuss. And then I think the main portion of tonight's meeting is the next section, which would be any council questions, input and direction to staff moving forward. And then just probably like a quick little wrap up onto next steps. So if we flip to the first section in the binder, I've just prepared a quick staff report. Again, you've seen this information before. It's just sort of a placeholder and reference material so you can look at the timeline and see where we are. I've put done beside things that are obviously done and that we've already taken care of. So as you can see on the, on page two, we are at the committee of the whole meeting on March 14th, which is sort of a final review of the financial plan. The council will see it again at the April 4th regular council meeting, and that's when the plan itself will be approved so that it can go to bylaw. So tonight is kind of really going through it and finalizing everything. And like I say, the bylaw readings come after that. So first three readings are scheduled for April 18th and fourth and final reading scheduled for May 2nd, which will fulfill the requirements of having it adopted before the legislated deadline of May 15th. So if we wanted to turn to the next section, I, we've, the CAO and I put together just a, a quick summary of the process to date. So we started, first of all, we started with a $214,000 deficit for 2023. That was version one of the financial plan, which was included in your previous budget binder. I didn't include it in tonight's because we've moved past that. And that version of the financial plan, it included a 10% tax revenue increase, 4% increase to water fees, 7% increase to both sewer and solid waste user fees. So once that initial draft budget was put together, the next step was that I, myself and the CAO met with senior leadership and we discussed with them possible areas to reduce service levels, cuts to operating budgets, ways to reduce the deficit, et cetera. We then looked at additional revenue sources and increases to user fees. So that included leaving the tax revenue increase at 10%, but increasing water user fees to 8% and 14% for both sewer and solid waste user fees. And then the next thing we did was, once we had the input from the department managers, the CAO and I looked at the operating budget and where we could reduce, reduce things and make some changes in the budget to address this deficit. So all of those things being said, it resulted in a almost $75,000 savings. At that point, I analyzed options to address the remaining deficit and as was presented at the previous meeting, proposed to you counsel that we use the remaining COVID-19 grant and potentially partial use of the growing communities fund. Again, eligible ineligible expenses are not yet known. We still haven't heard from the province as to, A, when we're receiving the money. I believe it's in March sometime. Or what is eligible and what is ineligible. But as soon as we know, we will bring that information to council. So for tonight, I think the discussion points, when we get to that section of council really sort of, you know, sitting down, having the tough discussions about this budget is, what is your comfort with our proposed increases to user fees and taxation? Do we look at applying additional tax increases to deal with the deficit? What is council's comfort with our proposed reductions to service levels and operating budgets? We need some direction to identify any additional changes to those cuts or possible increases. And then also use of surplus. So that's, that's not recommended. That's what we've been doing in years prior, and that's one of the reasons why we are where we are. Next page is just a quick little note here to remind everybody that the financial plan is a living document. It changes based on needs and circumstances that arise during the year. So if an emergency item comes up, that's brought to council, amending a financial plan, it's always an option. And it's done by way of council resolution and by an amendment bylaw near the end of the year. And I also included a little chart here on permissive tax exemptions, just for council's information. And there are several tax exemptions that are expiring in 2023.
And these are the ones?
These are the ones, yes. So does council have any questions at this point?
I just, I just want to comment, Mr. Mayor, just for everybody's benefit here. So when, when it comes to amending the budget, I just want to clarify that, that process for everybody's knowledge, that any time throughout the year, if there is a, an, an item that council would like to spend money on that isn't in the budget, that any such expense would likely come through a staff report or through a delegation or through a letter from the correspondence from someone requesting amount of money, that you can, you know, you can consult with staff, get, 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 we can provide updates about where our rolling budget, what sometimes that's referred to as a rolling budget, that, you know, where are we? What's the status of our rolling budget? We may even decide to provide you updates to that potentially bi-monthly or something to that effect, just in account, in a council agenda so you can see that. And, and then at the end of the year, there would typically be one budget amendment made at the end of the year so that the totality of those budget changes increases throughout the year are then rolled into one budget amendment that is officially brought through council. And, and that's the process. I just wanted to clarify that for everybody that hasn't gone through the process before or what have you. Okay?
Hi. Counselor Burchett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we going to have time to go over the permissive tax exemptions at some point in your schedule? Or when are we going to do that?
Through the mayor. We can go over them whenever council would like to go over them. So if you wanted to discuss them tonight, that's, that's great. Yep, I can give you information on about them or answer any questions. Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask a quick question on these? Where, where are these nature trusts of BCs? Where, like, I know they're on the mainland, but where, where at?
Not on the mainland.
Or San Diego mainland?
Go ahead.
So these properties are mostly the estuary area. There's one large portion, which is the majority. Is that a map that was provided?
Yeah. Thank you.
Perfect.
Is that all? Do we want to discuss that further? You wanted to discuss the tax exemptions? Now would be a fine time, I would imagine. Go ahead, Counselor Burchett.
So currently, these are 100% tax exemptions, correct? In the past, have we ever done 50%, 75% or prorated over a certain amount of time with any of these?
Yes, Counselor Burchett. So Nature Trust actually originally was given a permissive tax exemption in, I think, 2013. It's, it was a 10-year tax exemption. And the parameters of the exemption was that every year, the Nature Trust would have an additional 10% exemptions. The first year, they had a 10%, second 20%, third year 30%, et cetera, all the way up to now they're 100% exempt. But that being said, they do expire in 2023. So the process for tax exemptions is we advertise in about July, we post on our public notice, public notice board in the Sayward News, and I believe, we may even advertise in the paper. To let organizations know if they want to apply for additional permissive tax exemption, there's a form that needs to be filled out. It has to come to council. Council has to approve it. It is legislatively required to have a bylaw approved by October 31st for the following year. So that would all come back to council this summer, late summer sort of thing.
Okay, thank you. And with regards to the Nature Trust, would this not be a great time to negotiate the extension of the Kelly's Trail, considering they're looking for a tax exemption and we're looking to possibly do some work there, parking, extend the trail, get people off the haul
Yes. When does the exemption expire? October 31st, you were saying?
At the end of this year. So for our calendar year.
So what we're looking at is for 2024. It depends, I guess, what we do and what we bring to the table. If you go back to the structure of the 10 years and want to give them a 10% and do that whole progression again, or you say this is your tax exemption with the parking, I mean, that would be, I don't see any issue with negotiating at that time.
Okay, thank you. I think we should look to do that and create better accessibility for tourists, for locals. That's pressure on the haul road.
We'll look at that at the, in the fall. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I seem to recall that the deadline for applying for the following year was August 1st, filling out the form and, and then notices given shortly after for what percentage that the organization has received, if they, if they do receive it. So, and I recall that the previous organization that I volunteered with got a form in the mail about two months prior to the deadline of August the 1st. So the organizations are, are notified. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the tax and the exemptions? Anyone? No? Okay. Back to you, CFO.
Okay, thank you. So the next section would be any public questions and comments. And again, there was some correspondence received that council may want to have a look at first or, you know, tell it to you how this next section goes.
Counselor Burchett?
Yeah, I just would like, possible that staff provide proper numbers for this. So then when we read it, it correlates exactly to, to our budget. I know some of these are our numbers, but some aren't necessarily our numbers. It could be outside numbers.
You're referring to the correspondence from Mr. Johnson?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So in order to do that, we'd have to table this and bring it back at the next meeting in order to verify. Go ahead.
Yeah, just to give it validity and, you know, do the due diligence on it. I think that we should verify the numbers before we really comment or proceed further with it.
I would offer a couple of comments, maybe to move this process along. I mean, this is part of the public input process. I think that's what council asks for. It is some information. I can provide some general responses here for council's benefit. To the first point, well, I guess to the very first point, we're not necessarily going to start 2023 with a, with a, with a deficit budget. We're actually going to finish the budget planning process and allocate our funds appropriately so that we begin with a, with a balanced budget and then we'll be, begin operations in the year. Yes, we're begin, we're beginning our planning process with a deficit budget, but it will be balanced by the end of the planning process. A nuance that I just wanted to clarify.
Because legally, you're not allowed to actually carry a deficit.
Correct. Yeah. So it began as a deficit budget to the point, the point is correct, but that's beginning our planning process. The point around legislative services, yes, we could have maybe increased the 2024, 25, 26 and 27 budget slightly. I think we've said to council before that our focus is on 2023 predominantly, but, but, but it's a point made and we can have another look at that to see if we want to make a nominal increase to that budget, a small percentage increase. The point around the administration, again, just for council's benefit, the administration budget fluctuates significantly from year to year because that's where, that's where a lot of our grant, that our grants are administered through. So it's, it's not a budget like a lot of the other operating budgets. It has a consistent trend. You know, it's not typically staying at a 3, 5, 8% increase. We apply for a lot of grants. We receive a lot of grants and we administer the expenses and the revenue through our administration budget. So that, that's a bit of an explanation. I mean, specifically to this 40 some odd thousand dollars asset management grant. So we have an asset management grant that's increasing the, the administration budget significantly in 2023.
Okay, that is, that's not coming out of general revenue. That's strictly for the grants. So the 41,000 that is referred to in this document is really a wash, so to speak?
More or less, yes.
Okay. Yeah. Q?
And then I think as it relates to the recreation center, I think the, the theme that Mr. Johnson is echoing or stating is echoing in this room. I think it's widely acknowledged that we, the recreation center is one of our services that we want to do the best job we can to try to wringing in our expenses in relationship to our revenue and try to, try to create a better balance there of those. We, it's a strategic priority for council. We've talked about that, about several initiatives that count, that staff are going to undertake in the coming year to try to help towards that end goal. And so I agree with the sentiments pointed out in, in, in the letter. I can't argue it. And it's something that we're all working towards.
Can I ask a question regarding that, please? You said you met with senior management or senior staff regarding on cutting and so and so forth. When you met with the rec manager here, was there any talk about cutting or, or the new hours? Have they generated any revenue? Has it been more of a cost? Do you have that breakdown?
So 2022 is a tough year to actually measure that against because the COVID funds were, were, were allocated to the operation. Many, much of the COVID funds were allocated towards the operation of the center. I can tell you in 2023, we've reduced hours. We've reduced, we're, we are, the plan that we've presented forward to you includes a reduction in staff hours, a reduction in operating hours, some assessment in the reduction of certain programs where numbers are low. So, and, and moving forward in 2023, I can tell you that the rec manager is going to begin reporting to council on a monthly basis. I just read the first draft report today. So the recreation manager is going to start reporting to council and providing you some more details around programs and services. And I don't think the first version of the report, the first iteration of it will have statistics per se. It'll be more of a general summary, but to follow as she, as she begins to compile and work with the numbers, you'll see more of that. So.
Okay, so you're saying that what's budgeted for 2023 is already with those reductions. So the budget for 2023 is slightly higher than the 2022 budget. So where was the savings? I'm not sure I follow. Because we're looking at basically $500 more budgeted for 2023 than was budgeted for 2022. And if there was a reduction in hours and cost, I would expect that the 298, 986 would be lower.
Not necessarily, because we factored in increase, significant increases in utilities. I recall that. So you're looking at hydro, propane. So I, I mean, I can guarantee you, we have reduced hours of operation and we've reduced programs and services and we've reduced staff hours.
Okay, can we see a spreadsheet on that in the future, please?
A spreadsheet on which?
On the cuts and the dollar amounts separated from operational costs, like separated from heating and so on and so forth? Like what are you, what was the deduction in wages and programs compared to 2022?
Yeah. No, not wages, not wages, just to clarify.
Hours.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, we can, we can.
Because this is kind of unclear to me. Go ahead, Counselor Burchett.
In reference to Jason Johnson's letter here, he recommends the village consider conducting a feasibility and best use study of the, the recreation center. Has that been done in the past? And if so, how long ago was it done?
It's being done now through the SRD. It's being dug. It's not completed. So right now, the SRD, actually about six months, seven, I don't know, a year ago, started to push for a study to be done. It went through the board because there's communities like Gold River and so on and so forth that are having much the same issues as we are. So there's no point on us doubling up on that study. So we wait for their study to come out. I'm not sure if they've been in contact with the CAO. They have been regarding the rec study because I know they were in contact with Jason Johnson before. Okay. So I, I'm hoping something is going to come to light shortly.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Mayor. And just on, with regards to that, then the SRD, is there going to be any future correspondence with us getting revenues from outside of the village to support the rec center?
Until the study is completed, the study may, there's two things that the study may do. Okay, one will say, okay, we're going to leave everything the same and the SRD is not going to make rec centers or offer rec centers to be a regional service. Number two is they could say, okay, we're going to make it a regional service and take it out of the hands of, for example, Director Wally and say, because some areas, regional areas and other communities as well are not contributing to the municipalities' rec centers. So they're basically, you know, giving milk for free, right? And that's one of the problems that we've had here for a lengthy period of time, which contributes to our huge deficit that we run. The last study that was done, it showed that 65% of the people that use a rec center are from the valley and over 98% of the people that work there live in the valley. But Director Wally has made it very clear that he will not give any monies to. So however, if we do become a regional service, then that would be divided equally throughout the amount. So area A would be in a position where they had no choice but to pay an equal amount. So until the study comes out and we go through the board.
Thank, thank you for that.
I'll just finish up by saying the last point around having shovel-ready projects. We've talked about that and they're planning towards that as well. So, so, Mr. Mayor, I just, I, I think that, I, I think that you can sort of receive this public information, this public input for information. It's been, I think we've gone through it and you can consider it as part of your, as part of your public input for budget planning purposes versus having to bring something back to you.
Very well. Counselor Ginsley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one question. There's, there's a wording in here that refers to, where is it going? The village of Sayward has residential tax rates that far exceed many other municipalities. That seems incorrect to me. I'm not, like, I don't think we're that much in line.
Caught me by surprise as well. I, I mean, we'd have to do a comparison. I think the province actually publishes a comparison of municipalities annually per, per, per population. So that information should be easily available. That would be 2022's tax rate, and we're not at the point yet where we've made a determination about what 2023 is going to be, but, and we won't be able to compare it to other municipalities because everybody's in the throes right now of, of finalizing their budgets, but.
When you look at some of the other budgets or the municipal tax rate in some of the smaller communities, for example, like Tassus and Zabelis, in compare, Zabelis not comparable inside there, they're a third of our size, but Tassus is. They're also not dealing with the same rec center thing as we are. So their tax rate is going to be lower, you know, from that, right? So I don't, I don't have all the stats. I know we looked at it before a couple of years ago, but I'm not, I'm sorry, I can't Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Further to Counselor Burchett's question, will the contribution from the, the, for a regional service be per capita or will it be equal?
So what you're saying is, explain what you're saying to me, just so I don't miss the point.
What I'm saying is the population of the village is approximately 320 and the population of the valley is about 700 and I'm not even sure of what the exact number is, but it's.
Substantially higher.
Proportionately, would that be a, that would be a per capita if, if the region, or sorry, the directorial area paid proportionately per capita and the village paid proportion, per capita?
Yeah. Right now, we don't pay for the Kelsey Center per capita. We pay per home. Is that not correct? It's not for how many people are living in the home. So it's not population-based. So until the study comes out and the recommendations go to the SRD board, I don't know if they're going to do it by population, but likely, I would assume they're going to do it the same way that taxes are collected is by home and not by population-based.
And just a second question that I have here about the.
And just a second question that I have here about the, the funding, something that's not financially viable and reduction to key services. And he lists the health clinic as one of those key services that there's been no increase. I don't believe that we fund the health clinic. It's funded by VHA and our contribution is to provide them this, the space at a dollar per year, whatever the rate is for their, for the use of our, of our building.
Yeah, there is a cost that we get charged, that we pay annually for the health center. That's another one of those services that should be a cost shared with Area A. Because it's not just our residents using. This is where I asked the staff to get us numbers from how many people from outside of the community are using it. So when I do go to the SRD Board with a report on it, I have the numbers in front of me at that time. That should be another shared program with the SRD.
Sorry, and I just have one third comment. The referral to the, the reference to the tax rates that far exceed any other municipalities. I'd just like to point out that other municipalities do not include their utilities, their water and sewer and drainage and garbage in their, in their tax notices. That is separate and it's billed quarterly. So we need to compare apples to apples if, if we're going to be making some. Because I, I can tell you that in Port Alberni, the people are taxed on hospitals and schools. And, and then the other utilities are based on, on quarterly payments.
Good, thank you. Okay, CFO.
So I'm not sure if there's any other questions from the public?
You're the only public here.
Okay, so we can move on to the next section, which is just reproduction of version two of the financial plan. And again, I've just listed the assumptions, which include a 10% increase to tax revenue, 8% increase to water user fees, 14% increase for both sewer and solid waste user fees. This version of the budget does not include any reserve transfers. It does include staff's recommended reductions and service cuts. It also includes the almost $30,000 volunteer fire department training and equipment grant that we received. And that was announced in February 2023. We were approved for that. I've also included an estimated residential class one mill rate for 2023, which is 3.91360 or $391.36 per $100,000 of assessed value. So that the CAO actually suggested I put that information in there just so somebody could look at that and say, okay, my house is worth, it's been assessed at X dollars. They can do the calculation to figure out what their taxes would be for 2023. But again, this is just an estimate and it, it's not final, which I put in there. It's going to, it's, it'll slightly change once the revised rule comes out at the end of March. And I, again, included the little chart just showing the effects on a single-family residential home. Average home, average assessment value is $395,743 for Sayward, which my, my little anecdotal comment is that's crazy because 10 years ago, I think the average assessment was 165,000 or something. So it's quite interesting to see how high it is. Yes?
Question. You mentioned, for example, the water and sewer rate increase. None of that is going to reserve. That's strictly for operational, correct? Spent?
Correct.
So, for example, in two years or three years from now, the sand at the water treatment plant has to be replaced. We have no monies at this point towards that, correct?
So, so CFO, Mr. Mayor, the CFO's answer was correct. We have no money out of this presently allocated to go to surplus or reserves. Now, the way that we generate surplus and reserves is, is by having extra money. So council can in fact budget to generate extra money. You could, I, I'll just throw something out here. You could say, you know what? We want to take from the growing communities grant and we want to apply $100,000 of that to X budgets. And you would effectively generate $100,000 in surplus. And then you could take that surplus and you could allocate it to your reserves. So right now, your original question to the CFO was, we are, none of these increases right now are generating a surplus towards reserves. No, they're not because we've, the budget right now is, is, does not include any increases intentionally to generate surplus for, towards the reserves.
So my point being is for council, if that's just to get by, when we have this project come up in two years from now, what's going to happen is we're not going to have any money set if we do this consistently for the next couple of years. We'll have no monies put away to actually pay for that infrastructure or that fix at the water treatment plant. And at that time, we're either, then we're going to have to hit people hard with a big increase in order to pay for that or borrow the money. So this is something that we need to be looking at now. So we don't have a big smack in two years from now or three years from now. Counsel Tinsley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, as I understand or as I recall, we passed motions to have, have reserves filled, like not filled, but continually contribute to them as opposed to past councils so that we were doing the responsible financial thing. So I believe somehow we have to stick to that program. How we do that is another question, but I believe we have to stick to that program because we started it last year. It's very important to, to manage fiscally responsibly, Nicole.
I agree. Counsel Burchett?
Would it be possible to lock up some of the, the GCG money in two or three-year terms? So use the interest rate to, to offset any of the existing costs for replacing the sand?
CFO, that's a question for you. Sorry, say again?
Sorry, I missed your question.
Would it be possible to put away or lock up some of the GCG grant money in two or three-year terms and collect the interest on that to offset costs for, say, the sand in the water filtration plant? So we have a plan in two years to replace it. We put quarter million dollars away. It generates 5% interest compounded per year. That equals the cost replacement of the sand, as an example.
Thank you, Counsel Burchett. So yes, typically staff will invest any excess monies, no matter what. So it, when we do receive this, this money from the province, typically what I will do is I'll look at what our monthly expenditures are and I'll do some sort of a quick analysis on what we can afford to invest for several months. And, and we do do that. We do invest with either MFA or through the MFA, there's a high interest savings account that we invest through. And we do get quite substantial interest every month on those investments. So yes, great idea.
Thank you.
One of the things we've got to be careful with, with this monies coming forward to the province. Number one, I know from speaking to MLI Badchak, none of this is going to be able to go towards tax. But we don't want to take a big chunk of it and, for example, put it towards the Kelsey Center or something else. Because after this year, we're going to be in the same boat next year because we have done nothing to fix that. And we're not going to get, I doubt we're going to get another 622,000 next year. So we have to be responsible about that now. So we don't have a problem next year, in my opinion. CEO?
Yeah, I would echo your last comment to the question around investing the money in, putting it away in investment. So one, the, the only caveat to that that I would say is that we also want to be liquid in, in case there are opportunities for, say, grants to come up where they're asking for matching funds and we may actually have to, CFO would do a good job of looking to see if there's any penalties. I just wouldn't want to see us go and put substantial amounts of our money away and not be able to leverage funds to a, to a, an opportune infrastructure grant if we needed it.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, so moving on is just another copy of version two of the financial plan. Again, nothing has changed from the previous budget binder that you were presented with. It's just included here again for your reference. If we go to the next section, I've also included again the summary of proposed reductions to service levels and department budgets for council's reference. And the next section is where we sort of start now getting into the nitty-gritty and going through council's questions and input and, and moving forward. So I did include, there were a few questions from the February 28th committee of the whole meeting that I've included in here. I, I don't know if I need to read them out, if council's had a chance to look at them. It was a few questions regarding the employer health tax, what's that, what that's going to cost. So I've included that number there. It's about $1,400 a year. And I've included a little link there if anybody wants to check out the province's website on, on that tax. Counsel Burchett asked a question, what percentage increase in taxes would be required in order to address the $120,000 deficit, which is showing in version two of the financial plan? And so I've done a little calculation there and come to the conclusion that tax revenue would need to be increased by at least 32% to balance the budget. And that would translate to.
Sorry, say again?
32%. That would translate to an increase of $438 for an average assessed home in the village. And, oh, yeah.
Can we just stay there for a minute? So in order to, currently on version two, in order to stay at a bell or get a balanced budget, we need an increase of 32%?
So, so in version two, we're showing a $120,000 deficit. If, if council made the decision to not use the COVID money or a portion of the growing communities fund, then yes, you would have to increase taxes by 32% in order to eliminate that $120,000 deficit.
Okay, so how much is left in the COVID fund? Because the grant money, we don't know what we can, we can't, I was told we cannot use it for taxes or deficit. So if that in fact does come back that way, say hypothetically, it comes with all these restrictions and we just have the COVID money, what deficit are we looking at?
Okay, so to answer your first question, how much money is left in the COVID reserve? I believe it's just under $100,000. It's 95 or 92. It's, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head.
Okay.
Actually, I think it's reference materials here at the back.
So there'd be 25,000 roughly remaining?
Yeah, not, almost 92,000 left in the COVID reserve.
So I'm, I'm not understanding the 32%. Because if we use the, 32% seems like you're talking about the municipal tax portion, 32%?
Correct.
That, that's in addition to the tax, tax increase. It's already included in the version two.
42%.
In, plus the user fee increases and all of the other revenues, you would be required, yes, another 32% increase.
So 42% in municipal tax increase?
Yes, and that's just to offset the $120,000.
But if we use $95,000 of the COVID fund, we're down to 25,000.
Right.
And that's less than, correct me if I'm wrong, if our tax rules around 300,001% increase on that would cover that, correct?
So, so if, if we're at 120,000 and we take away 92, we're at 28,000?
Right, and we're at 300,000 in our tax roughly. 377.
Yeah.
So 1% is 37,000. 3,700, sorry. Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, per, you can, a person can, I mean, what, what's 28, yeah. Approximately a quarter. So take a quarter of 430, you would, you would, you could apply another, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 10% tax to cover off that balance of $28,000. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, about 8%.
Yeah, to, but to go to your other point, which is we cannot use the growing communities fund to pay taxes. We don't, or pardon me, to pay taxes. We don't have to use it to pay taxes. We can use the fund towards other program and service areas, which will.
Offset.
Offset.
Counsel Burchett?
Question for page nine on version two summary, the RCMP rent. I noticed there's a $1,000 increase in year 2025. But if we look at rental increases across the province, they're roughly 5% to 10% a year. Now, is there any reason why we don't have a scheduled increase that reflects what other people are paying in an increase? And keeping in mind that the RCMP is a corporation-for-profit.
Contract. Sorry, go ahead.
So the agreement with the RCMP for the leasing of our building had a option to renew for two five-year periods. So those increases were included in the agreement. I'm, I don't know if it could be renegotiated, perhaps, but that would be something that we would need direction on.
All right, thank you for the answer. And that obviously changes in 2025. It renews at the addition, okay, thank you.
And one other question that was asked at the previous meeting was, why are the 2022 actual expenditures for the recreation center so much lower than the budget? And that is because there were a few items included in the budget that were actually capitalized at the end of the year. So they were moved out of that expense GL and put into a capital GL. So it, it, it's not lower. It just appears lower on the spreadsheet because it's, the expense has been moved to a different GL. That's all. And that, that was for the accessible front doors and the camera system.
CEO?
So, Mayor and Council, so our thoughts for this next portion here, we, recognizing that Counsel Paulson has made a submission, recognizing that council may have pondered different theories and ideas about what you'd like to see. Our sort of thoughts around process for the next, however long, would be, you know, really left to you, Mr. Chair, to facilitate the conversation. We're here able to, we've got a spreadsheet ready to go here to track any increases or decreases. Counsel advises staff in terms of, you know, keeping the flow going. We recognize that this is a committee meeting, not a council meeting, so we're not making resolutions. We don't have to necessarily vote. However, you know, maybe you do want to use a voting system, not officially, but unofficially to move things along. I made a note to myself for council to remember that, you know, maybe you just want to use a term such as I recommend. You know, I recommend such and such and let a voting process help you along as council to make decisions. And we're here to answer any questions you have, impacts on budget, et cetera.
Do we know the cost of the maintenance of the water treatment plant annually? Just the water treatment plant?
Um, if you give me a second, I can find that number for you.
Great, great, thank you. And how much, do we have any idea what the sand is going to cost us in a couple of years? Searching for some numbers. Go ahead, Counselor Burchett.
Yeah, I'd just like to start the discussion on a possible line item that we could put in our budget in perpetuity. And that's something to do with economic development or business development, or which could include tourism development that we could put in our budget and we could use that for various uses and discuss that further. But I think that's something that we should have in our budget. A lot of municipalities and communities have that in their budget to support their businesses, whether it's developing a business ledger, so we know and support all the businesses, so.
Yeah, the only difficulty I see with stuff like that and and ask from community organizations that the growing community grant sounds like that could be a fit going into something like that. But in terms of putting in the budget and thus I think the budget for it at this moment and putting our taxes up to municipal taxes up to 17% just to have that in the budget, I don't know if that's appropriate at this time. What do you guys think? I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor.
Well, I I think right now we don't have anything supporting existing businesses that that we draw from. And we need to have the Village of Sayward a place where businesses want to set up and support mechanisms need to be in place for that. And, you know, whether we use all of it or not, or whether we allocate some of that for other organizations to use to promote business for the Village of Sayward, it should be a line item in the budget.
Yeah, we do that with the chamber under the Campbell River or the District Chamber of Commerce. They list all our businesses that want to participate in that, we do do that.
Yeah, but that's Campbell River.
Yeah, it's tourism destination also all across.
So if a tourist came into Sayward, there's no map for them, there's no business directory, there's no list of artisans, there's no list of farm stands. So building that ourselves and and just working on that every year, if we put a good foundation in, then something that could really help businesses here. And, you know, that's great that we have partnerships with Campbell River and Tourism Campbell River and the Chamber of Commerce, but we still need to develop something for Sayward and for the people of Sayward and for the tourists that come here.
Counselor Tinsley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I think Counselor Burchett's idea is interesting. I would suggest that we just hold on to it and work with what we're trying to deal with right now and then come back to it and see where we are, but I'm open to all sorts of options. And I would suggest that we want to decide on our commitment to our reserves per our previous plan first, because that will affect where we're going next. Because I believe without knowing that commitment, whether it's there or not, and I believe it's financially smart to do that, we can't turn back now.
That's why we brought it in.
Yes, so I think we have to have agreement on a number that we want to go into the reserves and then come back to what that does to this current position and then look at the cost cutting or tax increases that are needed to to meet that that financially responsible obligation.
I agree. Oh, sorry, Counselor Poulsen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last comment that I have on the input that I sent in was having no, no budget for tourism for 2023 until the status of the previous tourism committee is resolved. And I think that's a major issue. And I would like to see that discussed further and investigated further at at a future council meeting with input from the staff on how we got to be where we're at today. And furthermore, we don't have, I can't find any written policy that states that we give monetary funding to community associations or groups and that sort of thing. And I would really like to see a written policy around that because historically there has, as far as I know, there has never been a policy or where funds are given out.
Sorry, I'm going to have to call a point or two of that because we're discussing budget. We're not discussing formulating a policy. So we'll stick to that, we could do the policy.
Okay.
We can do that kind of thing at a later date.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Sorry, your microphone, please.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have to excuse me. I was speaking with the CFO around the previous matter that Counselor Tinsley was discussing because I was just collecting some facts. Did we in fact, just to clarify, did you in fact want staff to include as a next step to include the the percentages of increase or the allocations as identified in the bylaw towards the reserves? Is that what I think I heard in the background?
Last year, we increased by 1% and that 1% to go into reserves.
And this year, we didn't include those. We were in a deficit position and it was just a, it was a decision that for planning purposes, but I'm hearing you say you'd like those included, thank you.
Yes, please. What I'd like to see is an actual exact percentage, exact everything that we need to to move forward. Counselor Tinsley?
I think if if we know how much needs to go into the reserves to meet our plan, we should be able to ballpark it and then move forward from there. Like we can do that right now with a little calculator or whatever. Anyway, that's my thoughts.
So, but we don't know, for example, what, did you, were you able to find the cost of the water suit?
Works out to approximately $50,000 a year.
Okay.
That's chemicals, maintenance and repairs, equipment, utilities, does not include staff wages.
Right, okay, so a certain percentage of what we collect for water goes towards that 50 grand? And so the shortfall is going to be anything additional like the sand? Okay, do we have any idea ballpark, not the exact number, but ballpark on what that sand is going to cost us in the next couple of years? Okay, okay, so if we bring that forward later and we anticipate, say it's I I have no idea, but hypothetically, say it's 10 grand. I don't know, 10 grand a sand, sounds like a lot of sand to me, but say, say it's 10 grand, then we should be putting into reserve to cover that is what you're saying as well. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. All I'm saying is that whatever plan we had, whatever percentage, whatever dollar figure that we passed, that we were going to put into reserves, whatever reserves, sand, whatever, whatever those reserves are, that we figure out what that number is because we need to stick to that plan. Otherwise, we're not doing our job. And and know what that approximate number is so that we can figure out how much cuts we need to make or increases to keep on track with that.
And what percentages are we going to run at? Go ahead, CAO.
Yes, we hear you there, got it, okay. As far as purchases of sand and things like that that happen, that's what the five-year, I just don't want council to not think we're considering things. That's why we have the five-year plan. So if, and I can say like I'm just here a couple of months. Yes, we put general numbers into the five-year plan. But as the CFO and I begin to do more work and look ahead further, you may see certain spikes in certain years where there are forecasted increases of certain things. Like if sand is purchased, for instance, every two years, and I know it isn't, but I'll just give you an example, then you, every two years in the five-year plan, you will see a spike on that second year, every second year. So I, the reserves are not for operational expenses. The reserves are for unforeseen operational expenses, like a major, a major capital repair, a major cap, a major capital maintenance or infrastructure maintenance and or replacement. But I just don't want you to think that we're not budgeting for those routine operational purchases like sand. That's not what the reserve is for.
Well, that's every five years.
But it's still operational.
Okay.
We don't use reserves to purchase sand. We use reserves to offset capital infrastructure improvements and or replacement.
So instead of a big peak when it comes to play, are we taking operational monies, putting it aside now for when that happens? So we can have an even flow going the five years opposed to the, as you put it, the peak and the valley? Go ahead, CFO.
Thank you. Well, I was just going to say that's the other reason why we have surpluses. So you do have a sewer surplus, water surplus and a general surplus. So those are basically, I don't want to say slush funds, but accounts or surpluses that can be used for operational items. Again, in the past, we've heavily relied on those surpluses and drawn them down to a level that now they're, they're quite small, but they're there for those types of items as well.
Yeah, and as you were saying before, correct me if I'm wrong, the 1% that we allocated for the reserve fund last year, because of our financial situation, the monies has been spent. Is that correct? Okay. Counselor, Counselor Gilkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one question, what is IT? I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking.
It's hair product?
That's what I was expecting.
Yeah.
I do have a question about UBCM because it says only one member of council can go. What what does it roughly cost to send one, like the mayor and one council member? What 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 is the rough estimate on that?
It's usually around 3,500.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-three grand.
That's for both?
No.
That's for one?
One.
It's the whole week.
Yeah.
Do we have?
Plus your eating, five days.
Do we have to send somebody?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Burchett?
I'll open that discussion right now and
No, let's stick to the budget.
Okay, well, it's part of the budget, so. Are we talking about it or not? It was just brought up. And and what I was going to say is I I talked to the CEO early about it, my educational plans for the LG LA certificate, all three levels I'd like to achieve. And doing that, I need to go to the UBCM. But having said that, it's obviously a discussion with all of us to see who goes and and budget plan. So here we are, let's discuss it.
Counselor Tinsley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no problem going in, we're going to get into the weeds, I'll call them, all the fine detail. But we need to agree on this big number, which is the reserves. As I see it, it's a block number. And if we're committed to it, then then we're going to go into, the next step would be, if we're going to meet that, then what order the numbers we're looking at, how many cuts or non-cuts or revenue increases do we need? We need to start with the big picture and then work down to the little items here.
Does everybody agree with that? Okay, moving on.
Could I be so bold as to suggest a short break?
You know what, it doesn't even have to be that short. It can be, sorry, let's use the correct clock. Is 20 after 13, 12 minutes good for everybody? Is that enough time? 11 minutes? 11 minutes? I'm sorry. Okay, we shall adjourn for, take adjourn for a break. 11 minutes.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, thank you for the break.
No, thank you.
So a couple of things. And this was a reminder, I, I went through this before with the CFO, but it was, we, we didn't spend a lot of time on it. And Counselor Tinsley, Tinsley's brought up a great question, so I wanted a bit of time just to be reminded about the language around our reserves. So just as a refresher for all of council, we have a bylaw to establish reserves, which establishes approximately eleven reserves. They're funded in different ways. You know, I'll just mention capital, sewer, water, transportation, community works, gas tax reserve, fire facilities and equipment, climate action, COVID, election, land sale reserve and parkland acquisition. Some of them are already funded through the budget. But others aren't. And so I can tell you that, um, the, the reserves that council would want to, well, let me say this, it would be our suggestion that we pause any further discussion around the fire facilities and equipment reserve until we finish our our dealings with SRD. The four remaining budgets that I think council would want to, um, discuss are the capital reserve fund, the sewer capital reserve fund, the water capital reserve fund and the transportation infrastructure reserve fund.
What is that reserved for? Like, what are you referring to, transportation?
Roads.
Just roads?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the next question is, uh, or the next question I had, I needed to be reminded about is, is what is the mechanism for creating those reserves? The, yeah, what, yeah, what is, how, how are those reserves? Because I think Counselor Tinsley used, uh, sort of referenced what might seem reasonable. And that's like 1% of something, 2% of something. We don't have any prescribed percentage laid out in the policy. We have minimum levels for reserves for each reserve and we have maximum levels of reserves for each reserve. Which kind of leaves us here tonight to sort of contemplate, you know, what would you want to set aside tonight or in this year's budget? Factoring in, I guess, a couple of considerations. A, you already know, we started off with a deficit budget. We're being partly recognized, we're partly, partly being rescued by the, uh, uh, we're being rescued by the COVID budget. Uh, and, and then the growing communities fund for, for the remainder. So you know, I can tell you that if you take the capital reserve fund, for instance, the minimum level for the capital reserve fund is laid out to be 25% of a total cost of a capital project identified as capital funding for the next fiscal year in the five-year plan. So 25% of a capital project identified in the, in, in the, in the next fiscal year. Well, the next capital project that comes to mind is the drainage project. The drainage project budget is 1.8, 1.8 million dollars. Which therefore 25% of 1.8 million dollars is four hundred and some odd, four hundred and some odd thousand dollars. I don't know what we have in the budget right now and the reserve right now. Oh, we do know, because you can go to the, nothing. So there's nothing in that reserve. So I'm just using that as an example. We're far away from where this council philosophically thought that it wanted to be when it developed the, the, the bylaw and the policy. So the question for you tonight to discuss is, you know, where do you want to, how do you, you know, what do you want to walk away doing tonight? Do you want to set aside forty thousand dollars into reserves? Do you want to set aside sixty thousand? Do you want to set aside a hundred thousand? And then the next question you would have to ask yourself, or at the same time, is how are you going to fund those reserves? So you want to cut services? Do you want to take from the growing communities fund? And when I, you know, when I say take from the growing communities fund, you may not necessarily be permitted to take growing communities fund and put into reserve, but we would shuffle the the budget accordingly to generate the amount of money required for the reserve. So I think I've said enough. I want to turn it over to you.
So if you use, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you use, uh, the shuffle game for the, uh, growing communities grant and the COVID money, it doesn't change the position we're going to be in next year at all.
Yeah, if, if, if our propane budget is sixty thousand dollars next year and we use sixty thousand dollars of growing communities fund to pay the propane budget, which generates the sixty thousand dollars that was going to be used, it's still sixty thousand.
Thousand dollars, or a little higher next year with inflation costs and so on and so forth. So my point, as I said before, is we can't be looking at this grant as the savior. At this point, we have to budget accordingly. Counselor Burchett?
Just playing with the idea of, uh, taking that six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars and splitting it five ways and using that for the next five years as a budget plan. Like if, you know, that's a hundred and something thousand dollars per year, that'll help offset our deficits. And in four years, you put that money away at interest and then three years and then two years. This is an idea and that gives, you know, that gets us out of the black or out of the red into the black right now. And allows us to understand that, okay, well, we use, you know, 20% of that this year, we're gonna use 20% of that next year. We're, we're getting interest on it if we put it away for like, you know, year four, five.
Yeah, I, sorry, Counselor Tinsley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a very interesting idea as Counselor Burchett has. My cautions around the concept, although I think it's interesting, is the need for grant money to be used. The other caution is it's really, it's, it's almost the same as if we tried to use it all this year to, to, to stabilize everything and keep taxes down even. That we can't, we, the intent of the grant, as I understand, is, is not to be used to, to save us from ourselves. The, uh, it's for other purposes. Um, and we do need to stick to a responsible pay-as-we-go plan, which involves these reserves as, as a very minimum part of that plan. Otherwise, we are fooling ourselves. And if we're going to do this as part at any time, it would be at the beginning of a four-year term to, to stick with the pattern, not go backwards. We just can't play what I call funny money games. Otherwise, someone's gonna have it on their face at some point in the future and it'll be a huge tax increase. And we need to manage this responsibly.
I agree. One of the things that we could, um, if it's a growing communities grant, look at stuff that, uh, for example, involves, until we get the list, we could look at, um, whether that would be education for counselors. You know, would be a part of that. And that's where part of those funds could go for, for LGMA and for UBCM and so on and so forth, for that educational aspect. It also could be, and likely in there is going to mention tourism and things like that, economic development, infrastructure. Right? But I agree a hundred percent with Counselor Tinsley. We should not even we could take that grant out of the equation right now and deal with what we've got. So it's not a problem. It's not as big as a problem next year or the year after. Because if we just keep pushing it aside, it's gonna smack somebody between the eyes. CAO?
Yeah, I I would, um, so there's a couple of conversations happening all around at the same time here. So we began the discussion, I think, um, in fairness to everybody, we began the discussion with a suggestion for an economic development budget. And, and, and then we morphed into UBCM. Economic development, we don't have a budget for it right now. And, uh, and then we began talking about UBCM. There's an existing budget there. There's a proposed, there, it's being proposed by staff. Not proposed, it just, it was, it was itemized, one person attend. That's for council to decide. You could decide to send all of you if you'd like. And and, and, and then I think we got into a greater conversation around the reserves. And then there was a suggestion, let's move back and discuss reserves first. So I think that if you want, I think it would be an important discussion for you to have in terms of what do we want to set aside for reserves? I think that's, that was the suggestion that was made. I think that's a good place to start. Make that determination and then, and then the next discussion is how do we want to pay for that? Do you want to cut more services? Do you want to, on a you know, effectively, you're close to using, you, you're gonna have left over approximately six hundred thousand dollars of the growing communities fund. Do you want to use a little bit of that to, um, to help offset, uh, reserves, your allocation to reserves? And then look at the rest of your services. So I, I would begin with the reserves. I think that's an important discussion to have because it's gonna create a baseline for you, your next step.
Okay, so are we looking at percentage or dollar amount?
For our sake tonight, it would be very difficult to begin with percentage because it's just a complicated process and recognizing what the minimums are. And I, the minimum I gave you is very similar to all of the minimum, is very similar to all of the minimums. So.
Okay, so following the minimums that you have, that's not in the budget, correct?
No, there's no money set aside for reserves, period.
Okay, so.
So if you want to get to, for, like, if you want to get to minimums, you just need to start somewhere.
Okay, so let's look at the minimums. And what would that be? I mean, you're already looking at currently where we sit. And by using the COVID money, we're looking at 32%. Municipal tax increase is what you said.
Well, that was a question that Counselor Burchett asked and we just answered it, but that's not something we've applied. The, the increases that you have right now for taxes are for the year, the, the.
But still with the deficit, you're talking a 10% municipal. You said in order to get to where we the, the balance was 32%.
Well, that, that was a question that Counselor Burchett asked. He was just interested in asking the question. We have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that was, that, that we couldn't account for. Or, or pardon me, we had a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that was not accounted for in revenues. Counselor Burchett said hypothetically, hey, can you figure out what the percentage increase would be to cover that hundred and twenty thousand? And the CFO's calculation is approximately 32%. But, but that's not a suggestion. Where, where we have not made the suggestion.
Saying you're suggesting that. I'm just saying to balance without COVID money and the hundred and twenty thousand, we're looking at 32%.
Okay, yes, recognizing that the COVID money has to be spent this year. The COVID, the COVID money can't go and just stay in the account for the remainder of the year.
Right, so then we got twenty-eight thousand.
Correct. Correct.
Remaining, so at twenty-eight percent or twenty-eight thousand, what percentage increase are we looking at? Right now, with keeping the minimum service that we do have. Uh, the one person going to UBCM, what you've laid out here in version two.
Right.
What percentage are we looking at to cover off that thirty-eight? We're looking at additional.
I think it's approximately twenty percent.
Twenty percent. Seventeen percent, okay, so seventeen percent would get us balanced.
Plus the eight percent increase to water, plus the fourteen percent increase to sewer.
Yeah, no, I understand that. Yeah, I'm talking about the municipal tax portion. So that, so twenty percent gets us to zero. No money to reserves.
Correct.
For water.
Version two of the budget.
Correct.
Yes.
So that is a good starting point, is it not?
Well, when you say, is that a good starting point, that's, you, you don't need to look at us. You, that's looking at you. Is that a number that you're comfortable with?
We're at, basically seventeen. Percent, sorry CFO, did you say seventeen? Okay, seventeen percent. The same water and sewer increase as proposed in version two. To get us balanced. That's with all the cuts and all the proposals that are already, we're looking at a seventeen percent municipal tax. That's no reserve monies at all. So that's the reality of where we're sitting right now. Go ahead, Counselor Tinsley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make a suggestion here and we'll see where it lands. I, I, I'm committed to this reserve thing. I, I suggest we look at a figure of, uh. Fifty thousand going to the reserves. And if we look at the current twenty-eight deficit, which would be, we would commit to the COVID money being used for that, so it'd only be the twenty-eight. Okay, that we'd be dealing with. Plus the fifty, obviously, so we're at seventy-eight. And then we're taking, uh, basically the, uh, the detailed items that we've been kind of bantering around with, all those things. We go through those, we look at about a third of the money coming from what we can either cut or generate revenue in that area. Uh, and we look at a third, uh, sorry, am I doing this right? Maybe, maybe a half of the money coming out of that area and then the other half is coming out of, uh, tax revenue increases. So we've basically taken these, the concept of reserves as a responsible financial, uh, process. Um, a very minimum amount, nowhere near what our lofty goals were when we created it, but at least we're committed to a program that's. In the interest of financial, financial responsibility. And we're also, to our citizenry, we're also saying we've also looked at areas where we are trying to control costs. Um, and yes, your taxes are going up some, but not as much as they could have. If we were, if we're trying to be financially responsible. Yeah, so that's where I'm coming from. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
The fifty grand, are you including an increase from water and sewer or just fifty grand municipality, the municipal tax?
My suggestion, maybe that's where my third was coming from, was, um, yeah, splitting it up between all those different areas.
So like, yeah, twenty percent in water hypothetically.
Yeah.
Or X amount, okay.
Yeah.
Divided into all three, not just fifty grand for municipal tax.
Correct, thank you.
So to Counselor Tinsley's suggestion.
Can I just, uh, play that back? So, uh, the twenty-eight thousand, were you proposing for that to be covered? Through an increase in taxes or through growing communities fund?
Okay, so. Uh, so I haven't even talked about the growing communities fund. So my recommendations are all based on. Uh, agreeing with the mayor that we should ignore that and deal with what we've got. But we do have a comfort zone that we know that those funds, some of them will be able to use for this.
So we're adding an additional seventy-eight thousand.
Yeah, so we got the COVID grant in there, which brings us to, with the fifty into the reserves, is seventy-eight that we're dealing with and we're looking at dividing. Filling that number by dividing it between increases in municipal tax, water tax, sewer tax. And, uh, various, uh, either revenue increases or, uh, cost reductions in the areas cited for recommendations. Sorry, just one more item. The reason I'm suggesting that is. It kind of waits things out a little more evenly, um, and I believe we want to avoid. Uh, we want to, we want everyone to know that we're doing our job. We're trying to manage financially responsibly, but we're also. Looking at every area. We're not just saying, oh, the way to solve this is take your, your property taxes and jack them through the roof, right? We want to, but everything is being looked at. There'll be adjustments down and up and all these areas to come up with something that works. And I think that's what our citizens expect us to look at every aspect and divide it kind of evenly, so. But we all know, to recap, that things are more expensive. Inflation is there, that's just the nature of it. Some of this is out of our control. Thank you.
Counselor Burchett, you had a question?
It's, it's more of a comment than a question and, uh, we're doing quite the, the hack and slash and cover deficits and that. But we, we have to look at this as what other things can we do to generate revenue? Not just cover losses. So I think we need to spend a bit of time thinking about that. Um, what assets do we have in the community that can generate revenue? You know, do we have access to cut allocations for trees or renting out commercial space or, you know. Developing other businesses. So just looking at it from the one perspective of hack and slash and take from here to pay there, well. Let's generate some revenue and, and look at it that way too.
True, but how do you budget for that right now during this budget process?
Well, you put a line item in your budget that says business development and you put a zero on it. And when you go through the budget, you can be rolling as a CAO suggested. And we can add a number to it when we decide to look at, uh, using the GCG grant or whatever, so.
Okay, so your suggestion is we put a, uh, business development line in the budget, started off at zero. And then as time goes, increases on the rolling budget, on the living document, we make our adjustments. Which will help us for next year. Right? It's not going to cut down our taxes and, and what we have to do this year, but it's a good plan to get us through like for twenty-twenty-four. Is it difficult to add something like that?
No, it's, it's not. And, I mean, just to carry that concept forward slightly. We're putting forward a grant application to hire a economic development officer. So that economic development officer could come to council. And suggest a small initiative that might have a cost to it and council could just look at that line item and say. Direction to staff to allocate X amount of dollars. From the economic development budget, et cetera.
Yeah, as long as, like, I think Counselor Burchett is saying, as long as there's revenue generated from that. Go ahead.
And further to that, let's put the tools in place for us to be able to act on that by, you know, following through with that.
So, uh, if I could, Mr. Mayor, you just added a nuance there at the end, which I think, so. We can. It, it's, it's not easy to, um. Add a economic development revenue line item. It's far more difficult for a municipality to generate economic development than it is to support economic development. I just want to understand what the request is from council. Is the request to add an economic development. Revenue line item or an economic development expense line item?
Counselor Burchett?
At this point, it's an expense line item until we actually develop a plan and hopefully we get, uh, that grant and someone's in place. And, and we can direct them and they can use their research and help direct us and, and turn it into a revenue line item.
Okay, CFO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, okay, so I don't want to take away from, from all of this really important discussion that council's having. I think it's really great. And all of these are, um, awesome ideas for the budget. What I do want to say is, um, respectfully, we're, we're kind of getting late in the game here. So, looking at our schedule and what deadlines we need to make, meet to get this budget approved. And put into a bylaw and passed. Um, a, and also keeping in mind that we were a little bit late starting this year because we had, uh, a strategic planning session. We have a new CAO, we have a fairly new council. We're just, we're sort of in our infancy stages of getting this. Plan, I guess, for council, four-year plan together. And moving forward and figuring out how to, yes, obviously, address these deficits and, and, um. Uh, operating costs and, and how to move forward. So. I guess my comment is, you know, in the previous session we had, it was sort of recommended by staff that. You know, twenty-twenty-three is kind of our, our inaugural year, um. We're going to be saved by the COVID money. We're just, we're trying to balance the budget the best that we can, just to push through. And then staff are given sort of the year to present a bunch of options to council. So for example, we've talked about parcel tax, frontage tax, getting the regional district to contribute. Um, perhaps decreasing some operating costs, um, economic development. All these ideas and things that, that can be looked at to reserves. Um. Sort of, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is more, more information brought to council so that there could be a more fulsome discussion. On how to best move forward. And I, I, sorry, I don't want to take away from the discussion tonight. I think I'm just trying to. Reiterate that we are in a time crunch and, um, we, we do have to move forward, unfortunately. I, I don't really know what I'm saying. I, I, if that makes sense, yeah, so. So, so, so to Counselor Tinsley's point about putting money into reserves this year, yes, absolutely. Um, but again, we, that can be a financial plan amendment. Once we figure out, okay, how can the growing communities fund be spent? Can it be used for reserves? Are we able to put money into a capital reserve fund? Is that one of the eligible expenditures? If so, great, it comes back to council, here's our recommendations, we can put this, this amount of money. Council can discuss it more, more fully, have a, an entire staff report just on reserves and then we amend the financial plan. Just, just throwing, throwing these ideas out there. Thank you.
Well, just before I go to Counselor Burchett, um, did you get any numbers on the, um, commercial? Commercial taxation that we have, I asked at the last meeting. To what the commercial taxes are? Yeah, for the log sword and for the hotel and so on and so forth.
I, sorry, I missed that. I didn't realize that was one of the questions. What, what was the specific question?
On what are they paying for taxes and what can we look at there?
Okay.
Commercial.
As far as, um.
Increase.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have that information right now.
Okay, because that'll make, we should be able to recover. Some funds from that. Counselor Burchett?
Just to be clear, um, I want to make sure I understand fully that we're, we're going through this without getting any money allocated. From the GCG grant, correct?
Correct.
Because we don't know what we can use it for.
Correct. Counselor Tinsley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I totally agree with what the CFO has said. Um, and I will use the term, I believe we're in what's more of a, less of a transition year because of our, um. Santa Claus surprise from the government as well as, uh. Uh, the various things that are mentioned that are in the boiler, shall we say, around parcel taxes and things like that. So I think in the interest of time, I totally agree with the CFO that we can go on good faith that. Uh, we're going to work out things like the reserves later this year and we can just focus on the number we have in front of us, which I believe, which is. With the COVID grant going in is, we're back to our twenty-eight, uh, thousand and we're looking at these items on here. Uh, and making some decisions and then we're done.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
So why don't we take, we're looking at a seventeen percent increase to cover off the twenty-eight thousand. So to Counselor Tinsley's point. Why don't we divide that into the three groups? Water sewer. And municipal taxes, so the municipal portion is not. Seventy, right? Okay, you guys agree?
Yep, so what I can do is I can run those numbers and then that would be presented at the next, uh, council meeting, first meeting in April. Sort of as like the final version of the financial plan. You can still make changes to it that night, that's fine. Um, because the bylaw isn't read until the meeting after that. So for sure, I can definitely run those numbers, yep.
Okay, so what if we run those numbers, what if we find out what we can do in terms of the commercial taxes? And that might cut down on that twenty-eight grand as well. And then, as you said, it's because it's a living document, we'll set a time, uh, set aside some time in April and. Almost going forward on what we can do. To actually generate more funds. For the reserve and so on and so forth and decide what's a must-have and what's nice to have. Okay? Counselor Tinsley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're, so the one thing I think was kind of missed. There were, you're suggesting we're not going to look at any of these small items that are recommended here. Because that would reduce the twenty-eight even more. Okay, I think we need to at least look at some of these and say, we can do this, we can do this.
You said, don't go into the weeds.
Uh, so, well, that was earlier on. But before I came up with this wonderful concept of dividing things between things.
That was a wonderful concept. I think Counselor Gilken was very impressed.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm impressed with his hair, so. Um, we, we, so I think we have a responsibility to look at some of these things that are pretty simple to decide on. To bring that twenty-eight down a little bit, so those numbers that the CFO is going to provide to us are a little, little less. A little cushioned, shall we say, brought down. And then we've done our, 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 our job of spreading the joy all.
Yeah, I think the suggestion was they were going to bring back the numbers and we could start getting into the weeds and start to either cut or increase. After.
At the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay, if everyone wants to do that, we can do it then.
CAO?
See, I'm. I mean, I'm hesitant. I mean, this is our committee of the whole meeting where we're supposed to be doing our budget planning. I recognize that we can't necessarily provide you the precise information on. It's, for all of its name, but I, I wouldn't, I, I, I think what I'm hearing is that you're suggesting kind of delaying. The rest of the budget planning meeting until a future meeting. And I would caution against that.
Like, I, I'm unclear. I was under the suggestion or the impression that it was. The numbers and all that are going to be brought back for the fourth. The thirteen percent, the water sewer or seventy percent water sewer, dealing with that twenty-eight grand. CFO?
Uh, thank you. So, so, so yes, those numbers can be brought back to the April fourth meeting when the budget is sort of looked at as a, a final review. I think what's concerning the CAO is a comment that you just made about getting into the weeds at that meeting. That, that isn't where we would want to get into the weeds and, and go through all of these items. That, that would be sort of, here's your final version. Are you comfortable with these?
Okay.
About tax increases. So yes, tonight would be when you would want to go through any changes, um, to these items, yes.
Okay, what page is that on?
And, and I would add. Where we began the meeting with talking about budget amendments. Uh, that isn't, that, that, that isn't to be implied that that's our go-to. That's our go-to default every meeting, that the CAO said we can amend the budget. I didn't mean that. I just, you know, we just wanted to. Review that process. It's for special cases. So really, we're using this budget planning process to work through all of our items. I think some good discussion here around increase of taxes, how to allocate that. The CFO can bring back a division of those and what that will look like. Um, but I think we should continue on with the process of. If you want to do further cuts or at least go through the process of considering further cuts to do that tonight. Thank you.
Did you have something, Counselor Tinsley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I suggest we pick the low-hanging fruit off these, um, weed items, as I call them, which is not a very nice word, detailed items. is not a very nice word, detailed items. Because some of these, I think, are pretty easy pickings off, and then we can decide how far we want to go.
Like?
Would you like me to start? Okay, thank you. I would just like one minute, thank you.
CFO?
Sorry, and I just wanted to make one comment about this. So these cuts have already been included in this version of the financial plan, so you would need to?
Version two.
Correct. So if you wanted to make any further cuts, that would be on top of this sheet here.
A light has just gone off in my head, and I realize we actually have to come up with new things, we can't just pick off this list. Thank you.
The low-hanging fruit is laying on the ground.
Yeah, it's rotting. Okay, thank you.
Council Gilken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the 13th page, under the very bottom, it's right below or right above total savings enforcement officer, that's, or, yeah, sorry, enforcement officer, because we have Tony that writes the tickets, but is that that's under Public Works for that, or what is the enforcement officer allocation for?
Thank you.
Thank you. So that is for, yes, so there was originally a budget amount of $2,500 for an external bylaw officer, contract labor, basically, but correct, we have somebody on staff, I believe Kier even has, anyways. It can be done in-house, and that's why the budget was reduced to zero. So it was originally, there was an expenditure of $2,500, it's now down to zero. We've taken that out.
So, but that's not included, so you take the 74, 356 and minus 2,500 from there? Oh, sorry, okay, got it. Council Bichette?
How about a cold water pool for two months? That'll save us 20 grand.
Let's not heat the building. Well, I mean, the Kelsey Center is the largest drain, the second-largest drain that we have. We've gone from two years ago being at 206,000 to 300,000 now.
Well, I mean, we have to look at what is the biggest cost, and that is the biggest cost, and where can we shave on that now just to get through? And when we have an idea of how we're going to deal with the GCG, we can play with the budget a bit more, you know, but at this point, we have to look at hack slash 28.
But we don't have any actual numbers for that. They're going to bring that forward at the next meeting. We don't have actual Kelsey Center numbers, breakdowns on where those cost savings can come, or where revenue can increase.
Two months of the year, we don't have the pool heated, but we can still have a rec center. I mean, we have to look at some options here to save $28,000, just.
It is already closed, correct? Council Tinsley?
So for the, from the work point of view, we already look, we appear to be heroes in that if we agreed all these cuts here, then we're at 28. So I'm just kind of summarizing in my own head here. So we do have to come up with another 28 in cuts before we leave tonight. We've had a suggestion around the Kelsey Center, which seems to be hard to pin down just because of the numbers. I think we have to blue-sky with other things. What else can we say?
I mean, the Kelsey Center is at 300,000, 298,000, right? Two years ago, it was at 206. We used COVID money for it and so on and so forth. So what else can we cut that can equal 28 grand?
My apologies. Can I just interject for a second? I just want to clarify, I think somehow in the last while, a narrative has been created that we have to cut $28,000, and that's not necessarily the case. I just want to, I just want to make sure that we're not talking about something literal versus philosophical. I think the discussion began, maybe it would be a good effort shown to the taxpayers that were making every effort. The CFOs reminded you that staff began making a strong effort by reviewing our operating budget and making suggested cuts that equals $74,356. That got us down from 210 to 120-something. The 120-something part of that is being addressed through the COVID fund, there is a balance of 28,000. The suggested mechanism for covering that was the growing communities fund. We're permitted to, you are able to say, let's use the grow, allocate some of the growing communities fund to help offset our deficit. And again, it's not going to be used to go to a budget that says deficit, it's going to be used to go to a budget that says propane bill. But it will, as you said earlier, 60,000 is 60,000, and 60,000, it will generate $28,000 of savings for the village. So version two of the budget got us to a balanced budget for the year. Version two, as presented, got us to a balanced budget, along with the use of the COVID and the growing communities fund. Then there was the introduction of the, the taxes, pardon me, the reserves. And so, and you've asked staff just to bring back some information about that, and we can amend the budget to introduce money into the reserves later on in the year. So, does that help?
No, I'm more confused now, because, let me explain where I'm confused. We're, we're talking about bringing back in the future the 50,000 that Council Kinsey was talking about in terms of reserve. We, you have just stated that the COVID money and the growing communities grant will bring us to a balanced budget. Understood. Less than 50,000, we're at a balanced, yeah, with everything in version two, we're at a balanced budget without having anything to do with reserves. But a few minutes ago, I thought we wanted to get into the weeds. So I'm confused on where we are. Do you see where I'm going? CFO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, and I think where this confusion is happening is there was a comment made, excuse me, that, that we weren't going to use the growing communities fund, so.
Correct.
So I think it was you, Mr. Mayor, that had said?
It was.
We don't want to use any of that money right now, because we don't know what we can use it for. Where would we stand if we weren't going to use that money? $28,000 deficit. So if you, if you're not going to use any of that money, and you have a $28,000 deficit, now you need to get into the weeds to figure out how you're going to offset that $28,000. That's where that's coming from. However, as Mr. Gervais is saying, if we go back to the original plan of using some of the growing communities fund to cover that $28,000 deficit, we will have a balanced budget, we can move forward, there's no need to go into the weeds. But again, that's entirely up to council, but I think that's where the confusion lies.
Correct, correct.
Just add, and notwithstanding the fact that you've asked staff to bring back some information about the commercial properties, and I think that's, commercial properties, a little bit more information about Kelsey Center, but we've already made those cuts, but information about them, and I think that's it.
CFO?
Sorry, just in the other comment on the commercial properties, is I can certainly bring back information on what tax revenue is generated from commercial properties and the log sort, that isn't going to change the budget. So you have a set tax revenue amount, a portion will come from commercial, industry, residential, recreation, all of your different classes, that won't change your budget. So me bringing that information to you isn't going to change what your total tax revenue is. Council can look at tax ratios and look at, okay, we want 40% of our tax revenue coming from business and 60% coming. So that is what council can look at in the future, but, but the dollar amounts, it's not going to have any effect on the budget.
So we can't look at that during this budget process in terms of commercial properties are paying X amount of dollars in taxes for ratio and so on and so forth? We increase that ratio, which increases our net income from that, does it not? So if you increase taxes, say hypothetically, to a commercial property of $10,000 a year?
Typically, what we've done, because we are, I don't want to say such a small municipality, but that is true, is you have a total tax revenue amount. It's not split out between, how do I explain this? Tax basis. So you want to bring in $400,000 of revenue total. 60% of that comes from residential, 40% of it comes from business. There isn't any analysis to date, well, since I've been here, of, okay, we want 10, we want commercial to increase by 10%, and we only want residential to increase by 2%. That, that analysis hasn't occurred in the past. It's just, here's your total tax revenue that you want to generate for the year, and your ratios for each class, 60% from residential.
Dictates a ratio.
Counsel.
So the commercial ratio could be adjusted?
It could, yes.
To increase?
No, what it would do is it would reduce residential.
Residential.
So that is, that is a possibility, and that's something that, yes, if you're going to increase your total tax revenue by 17%, maybe only a portion of that is applied to residential, and a larger portion is applied to commercial. But that analysis would have to be done and presented to council.
I like that better. Council Tinsley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's an excellent idea to look through the future. I don't think we can handle it for this budget. I think we can address it later this year, look at it as going forward. I, I'm going to suggest that, given what we're talking about and appreciating that we talked about, not even talking about GCF or whatever it is, that the figure we're looking at here, 28,000 is about 5% of that, and I think we can faithfully imagine that we can use 5% of that, and I would just go with that, and then we're even. And then we have all these other items that, you know, we're going to get to this year, including your idea just now.
Council Bichette?
Yeah, I agree with what Tom asked us to say, we need to eventually move on, and if we're going to use some of that fund out of the 622, let's just do it. And move on, and, yeah.
By using that six, part of that 622, where does that put us next year? From the 28,000? So if the 2024 budget will be down that 28 grand, right? Because we won't have, hypothetically, we will not have that covered. So we're going to have to offset that at that time?
Well, you'd be even lower, because we won't have the COVID money. So you'd probably be at $120,000 deficit again, if we maintained the same service level as 2023, which is cut already.
Right.
And no additional increases in revenue, yes.
Unless in between now and then, something happens with the Kelsey Center, for example, shared services?
Frontage, parcel, water meters, a multitude of things that staff will be working on to bring to council for potential revenue sources.
Okay, so the idea, folks, I guess, is we look at using partial monies out of that 622 to put a set of zero. Again, we go back to, we look at everything that CIO, CFO's just said, to reduce as we go ahead.
So just to clarify, are we sticking with the proposed tax increases in version two, or is council wanting to increase it even higher? Because if we use, if we use the growing communities fund as suggested, the tax increases can stay as is, so 10% for tax.
10%?
10%, yes. So this can all stay, but I'm just, I'm sorry, I just wanted clarification on council's direction.
Council, want to state 10, 8, and 14? I believe it is. Council Tinsley?
There's some interesting things, I think we saw in the media about Campbell River and their increases, and then them trying to work it out down, which I believe are quite a bit more than this, granted, totally different city. I think in, it really depends how comfortable we are with these increases. Nobody likes tax increases, but the bottom line is, some of these are actually, if you look relative to current inflation, which doesn't appear to be going to disappear tomorrow or the next year, these are actually just barely covering it. Well, in terms of the basic tax revenue, the increase in the water and the sewer could be higher, right? It's just the nature of those services. So I know no one wants to hear it, but by increasing those, we could use less of the grant. And I think they would be swallowed by people who realize what's going on, because that is the real world. Anyone else who's not playing with the real world is, is losing money.
So what are you suggesting for a percentage increase in water and sewer? From eight, we already had eight on one and 14 at another?
Correct. My suggestion would be 10 on the water and 15 on the sewer and 12 on the basic tax revenue.
Also, we could say 3% of that basic tax is, from what I understood, could be yielded to the commercial properties? Not this year?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's a shame. Campbell River is at 9.8 percentage increase. Council Bichette?
I agree with two of the three increases that Tom suggested. I say we have the 10% general tax increase stay at 10%, but the other ones, I agree with his percentage points of 10 of 15.
So forget the 2% extra, keep it at 10. Okay, so we'd have to have those numbers run? So CFO, can you run quickly in your head? Because I know you can do this. There you go. Select the computer. My memory's full. What they're suggesting is we keep 10% of the municipal tax, 10% on sewer, and 15% on water. Is that not correct? No, 15, 15% on sewer and 10% on water? Okay, and what would that generate?
Well, sorry, not off the top of my head, but if you look on page eight, where it shows at the bottom the little chart on?
Yeah, I'm looking, yeah.
Yeah. So you can, you can kind of see there, for sewer, that's already at 14%. So if you add a percentage, we're talking dollars, right? The difference between 2022 and 2023 for sewer is $43 for a 14% increase. So if you're going to increase it to 15%, I don't know.
Does it make much difference?
Dollars.
Yeah, not like tens of dollars?
No.
Dollars.
Dollars, yeah.
If you're looking to have an impact on your budget, you really need to increase your general taxes, not your user rates.
Because the percentage is so small. Okay, so we're back at 12% on municipal tax? Eight in 14? Because the 2% of the municipal tax will generate 7,000, opposed to the $8 we're going to get from the other two. Council Bichette?
I still think we should use the GCF fund for the, to make up the difference. I think going above 10% for general tax, I mean, we're pretty close already, just keep it at 10%. We can really use our brains and get creative in the next year to make sure we don't have this problem. Again, we're all new to this, or at least some of us are new to this. So, I mean, using 20-something thousand dollars is not, is not huge, but I still think we should have 10% on water and 15% on sewer, and just 10% general.
Obviously, Council Tinsley agrees with that. Does Council Poulsen?
I think part of the reason for the increase is
I think part of the reason for the increase is to cover the deficit, of course, and maintain the services. The other part to consider is that people's homes have increased in value substantially. And that will have an effect on what 12% or 10% of the general tax is. So we haven't had a tax increase in several years. We'll just, it's been constant, and it hasn't been enough to cover. So if we, if we go with 10% this year and monitor that through the year to see how things are going, to see where, where we can use the, what were those initials? The fund, the fund, to augment some of the projects that we, that we can use it for. I think going with 10% would be a 2% less hit on, on the residents. And, you know, this was a potential, but if we can reduce it to 10%, then, like Counselor Tinsley earlier said, that it looks like we are, or it shows the residents that we're doing as much as we can to keep it as cost effective as we can.
Last year, we increased 8%, not the standard 2.5 that was done for, for years. Counselor Gilkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, Scott, or Counselor Burchett, you said, use the, the grant for, to cover that 28,000, and also add a 2% increase to water, put it at 10, and then a 1% to the sewer and the, and the solid waters, right?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Gilkin. Yeah, that's what I said, and it's probably going to bring it down a little less than 28 if we do that. Staff can run the numbers on that. I think it does show we're doing our due diligence to our constituents. And moving forward, they know that we're going to be working really hard on this to make some changes over the next couple of years and, and really get on top of this. We have this, this grant fund of $622,000 that we could really be smart with through investing and through proper placement of money in, in, in infrastructure and things we need, and just do it right. And yeah, just get over this hurdle now and just really work, grind it out next year.
Okay. Sorry, Counselor Gilkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Scott. I very much agree, or Counselor Burchett, thank you. I very much agree with that, this, that scope. Thank you.
Okay, so where are we? We're agreed? We're good? That's the end? I think that's pretty much it.
The only other thing would be the final section of your binder, and that's just re, re-including options for addressing the deficit. Going forward, of course. And connecting your strategic priorities to long-term fiscal sustainability and an estimated balance of surpluses and reserves, and a little sheet on grants and capital expenditures.
Budget's draining, isn't it? Okay, well, new business? None? Public question period? You're good? Okay. None? In camera, none?